Okay, I got it. Good evening, everyone. Stay to see the flight. At the notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the public meeting at pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter three, one, as that is completely be said known, and will send to the trend of times which are transcribed in newspapers, posted on the first world bulletin board, to the law, to the city clerk's office, posted, on the city traffic website, formal action will be taken. Roll call. Councilman Edwards.
Present.
Councilman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Present.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Harrison. Just a note, Councilman Harrison is present telephonically. Do you want to say it and repeat more time, because I didn't have a microphone, sorry. Noted. And Councilwoman Williamson.
Present.
And Councilwoman President Frisbee.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, Mr. Clark, present, and Mr. Cologia, I believe, is in room. Also, present is Mr. West Bridges. On your call.
As we begin.
Madam President, I understand that you wish to go into exec-- oh, sorry, let's try to push up. Say the invocation.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Almighty God, who holds the faith of a man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless us, our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And amen.
Thank you. And Madam President, as I understand it, that you wish to go into executive session at this time?
That was correct.
And if you wish, if you'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive session?
I have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We move in second, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. We now move to executive session, and we will be brief. Do we anticipate a vote coming out of executive session? I'm sorry. Yes, we do. We do anticipate a vote coming out of executive. Thank you. It's been moved in second, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Hold right now.
Hold right now. For a moment. Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frisbee. Excuse me. And Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
We have been charged in the race of executive session, the vote.
And we're back in council chamber.
We are back in chambers, this time on council's call.
Let's proceed.
Certainly. At this time, council is the, we are, we've reached a moment where we will select new officers for the year, this term, for lack of better terms, reorganized, so we will be opening the floor for nominations for council president, per our ordinances, subsection C of our ordinances, the vice president is given first consideration for nomination. Is there a nomin-- is there a nomination for that vice president?
Yes. I move to nominate Council Vice President Crystal Feliciano.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Yes, a second nomination.
Moved in second, I will call the roll for Councilwoman Feliciano for vice, for, excuse me, for council president. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frisbee.
In a spirit of unity, and even though I wasn't asked, I'm going to go yes.
Congratulations, Council President Feliciano. I am now turning the meeting over to you, and act upon your call.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, council colleagues.
And--
At this time, Mr. Garcia, can you call for nomination for vice president?
Certainly, Madam President. At this time, we'll open the floor for nominations for council vice president.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Jennifer Figueroa-Cattonberg for the position of vice president.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Council President. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Oh, wait, that's right.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Councilwoman--
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
All right, yes, Councilwoman Harrison. Joe, can you repeat that?
Yes.
Got it. And Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Oh, motion carried. Congratulations, Council President. Moving on with the agenda at this time, and I apologize. Council President, at this time, are there any presentations or recognitions that we are aware of for this evening? I don't believe so, correct?
Not this time, thank you.
Understood. We'll proceed with the docket, we'll move a motion for me, please.
We have public comment on agenda items only, if there are any?
Uh, but we are, actually, Madam President, is, if it's your wish, we could move to public comments for agenda items only, or if we could move to one public, single public comment?
There is no word on that.
Thank you.
Only one public comment.
Understood, there's one public comment, so moving through that, moving from there, at this time, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications and petitions?
May I have a motion to approve communications and petitions?
So moved.
It's been moved in second, I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes, remember, I'm a little lass now.
You're the council president, I apologize.
And I'm a little lass now.
So that would go from Edwards to the, Edwards to Councilwoman--
Me.
And then Edwards. And then Edwards. So, council, excuse me, roll call once again. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Bear with me with this order here. Thank you, moving on to ordinance, we have none resolutions at this time. Resolution twenty-three dash five sixty, resolution approving the year twenty twenty-four scheduled meetings in City Council, ABC Board, and Board of Health, City of Trenton.
Excuse me, Mr. Garcia, don't we have to approve the reports?
Uh, yes, if you'd like to have a motion to approve the reports, I apologize, I assume a motion to approve reports.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't communicate those reports together, I apologize. Oh, roll, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Oh, yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to resolutions, resolution twenty-three dash five sixty, resolution for the year twenty twenty-four scheduled meetings in the City Council, ABC Board, Board of Health, City of Trenton.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Don't we take it to virtue again, but to the council colleagues, I know we had brief discussion about what we were looking to do with the consent agenda. Is anybody, are we prepared to do that this evening? If not, that is fine. Does anybody have anything that they would want to be questioned?
Um, if I could suggest, Madam President, that we hold that process to the next meeting, because I do have questions, if I did not organize that faction.
Okay, thank you. Continue, Mr. Garcia.
All right, just prior to, Madam President, there is no motion for consent agenda, correct? And we'll be just going to reach resolution?
Yes.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Back to resolution twenty-three dash five sixty, resolution approving the year twenty twenty-four scheduled meetings of the City Council, ABC Board, and Board of Health, City of Trenton. And Madam President, do you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Right, can I have the motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Council-- Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Wait a minute, Councilwoman Gonzalez, I apologize.
Wait, I think I said that before.
Uh, Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash five eighty-nine, resolution appointing Brandon Garcia part-time municipal clerk for the City of Trenton.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero eight, resolution authorizing the City Council, the City of Trenton, to hold executive session, exclude the public, I believe we have already motioned to go into executive session, to resolution twenty-four dash thirteen, resolution designated official newspapers for all municipal notices and advertising.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Garcia, do you call the roll?
Certainly. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison. Councilman Harrison. That is, uh-- Thirteen. That's, um, resolution twenty-four dash zero one three, resolution designated official newspapers for all municipal notices and advertising.
Trenton, Trenton Times.
Trentonian and Trenton Times.
Oh, yeah, Trenton.
Both of them, Trenton Times and Trenton Times.
Okay, yeah.
Yes. Noted. Uh, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. First, resolution twenty-four dash zero zero nine, resolution authorizing a contract to WB Mason Company Incorporated, Twenty-One Commerce Drive, Grand Bridge, New Jersey, oh eight five one two, for the furnishing and delivery, FOB, I'm sorry, FOB stands for free on board, thank you, of office supplies, office furniture, and recycled copy paper on an as-needed basis for various departments and divisions awarded through state contract T dash nine zero five two eight 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 three nine, from date of award to May sixth, twenty twenty-four, an amount not to exceed four hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars and nine cents.
I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Consent?
Noted. And being this is a Thursday meeting, are we voting for consent agenda, or are we passing these resolutions, I'm sorry?
I thought--
So consent. So we're moving this to consent agenda?
Oh, wait a minute.
This is a Thursday meeting, are we passing--
Okay, never mind.
So, oh, it's been moved in second, I'll call--
Thank you.
I have a motion in second, correct?
Yes.
So I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash five six two, resolution, City Council, the City of Trenton, in support of a class five cannabis retail application of Kush Dispensary LLC.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams. So, yeah, I have just a couple of questions, and I spoke with Mr. Bridges a little earlier, so I know if she wants to say something first.
Do we have representative from Kush Dispensary present tonight?
Yes.
Do you mind approaching the podium, please, to point some clarification, if you had any--
Thank you. Good evening. So I wanted to ask your question upon the presentation we were given from Mr. Wolfsky for our information on your application, page four, under H S's applicants experience and or commitment to community health-related programs and associated charitable organizations, including but not limited to particular attention towards prevention of drug and alcohol abuse, including but limited to youth and vulnerable persons, both locally and regionally. So under the listing of the following local organizations that your company, if it operates in Trenton, will be providing money and resources to, our Corner House, Another Door Opens and the East Windsor Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Substance Abuse. So what my concern is, is I do see Prevention Coalition Mercer County and also Trenton Area Soup Kitchen. Where are Corner House and Another Door Opens located? And where do they operate? Do they operate in Trenton?
That was not in our application. Um, this is for Kush Dispensary LLC. So we've donated so far to only the soup kitchen, Trenton Soup Kitchen.
Okay. So this information where it says East Windsor Municipal Alliance and the other, it says Kush plans on partnering with the following local organizations, Corner House, Another Door Opens, East Windsor Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Substance Abuse, and Prevention Coalition in Mercer County. Also, Kush is actively engaged with Trenton Area Soup Kitchen, having donated five hundred dollars to the organization.
We only donated so far to Soup Kitchen, right? So we are planning to partner with them, we have not partnered with anyone other than Soup Kitchen right now. At the second, right? So one of the things, as we discussed on our presentation two weeks ago, since we submitted that application, which was back in January, we've learned, myself coming here throughout the whole year of twenty twenty-three, we've learned a lot of other organizations that could use the fund a lot better, so we're trying to keep all the funds within the Trenton, any donations that we make. And as of right now, we have not made decision on which organization we will be supporting, other than Soup Kitchen.
So then when it says in your application that we were given for this meeting to vote upon your, your establishment, it says East Windsor Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Substance Abuse, Corner House and Other Opens. So that's in the information that we were given. So are you, then you're committing tonight, those three names of organizations will be replaced by Trenton-based organizations dealing with substance abuse, et cetera, as we're required in the application?
Yes.
Okay, so why didn't we get the application when it says East Windsor, so obviously?
So since that location was submitted to now, a lot of things has changed, right? So we, we've learned a lot more about Trenton, and we are fully trying to commit a hundred percent to Trenton, right? First, our goal was kind of county-focused, but since then, we've kind of narrowed it down to Trenton only, even as we talked about last week or two weeks ago about hiring, right? We are committed not just to go outside of Trenton, but we're fully committed hiring everyone Trenton, so that's what's been changed, right? So our focus is not just taking the fund that we earn in Trenton to donate to organization outside of Trenton, we want to keep everything local.
Okay, so none of this money that you're talking about in your application will leave the seven point five square miles of our city?
Correct.
Okay. Was there any confusion about the application when you originally applied that it wasn't specified that the money was supposed to help in Trenton?
I don't think there was a confusion, we just weren't aware of any of the organization locally at that second time that we submitted, so we were looking at it as a whole of county and so on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. Garcia, can you proceed?
Certainly, roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Councilwoman--
Frisbee.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to resolution twenty-three dash five seventy-eight, resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Sheila Tadarek versus City of Trenton, in total amount of one hundred ninety thousand dollars.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Garcia, do you call the roll?
Councilwoman Edwards. Sorry, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
No.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-four dash twelve, resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Kaplan Group LLC versus City of Trenton, in the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
May I have a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Garcia, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero one, resolution amending, resolution twenty-three dash five eleven, authorizing dedication of certain city-owned properties, Trenton Housing Authority, in support of the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant, application for the development of the North Trenton Battle Monument, Choice Neighborhood Redevelopment Project.
May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Garcia, please call the roll.
Oh, Council President?
Yes, I'm sorry, discussion, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Councilwoman Williams. I do have a question for Mr. Beach, our director of housing area redevelopment.
Good evening, Council. Jim Beach, acting director of AGD.
Good evening, sir. I'd just like to ask you to explain the importance of this resolution, just for dissemination to members of the public about why this is coming at this time.
Yes, Councilwoman. So we've had numerous discussions and numerous resolutions towards the Choice Neighborhood Program, and as part of that program, the City of Trenton is contributing numerous properties, a couple hundred properties, to be developed by Trenton Housing Authority. Some of the properties that we originally intended to submit as part of our application with Trenton Housing Authority have been redirected to the state as part of the First Lady's project for the birthing center. But in order to sustain and support our application for the Choice Neighborhood, we have to have a minimum number of properties, and so that's why we're adding this amendment to add these new properties to the list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garcia, can you move to the roll?
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-four dash--
So moved.
--resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Montrose Environmental for an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, which was awarded on an emergency basis for the performance of a vapor intrusion investigation at residences near the former Mercury Cleaners site, two fifteen, two twenty-five, West Ingham Avenue.
I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Garcia, proceed to the roll call, please.
Certainly, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-four dash zero zero two, resolution authorizing contract to C and M Auto Parts Incorporated for purchase of auto parts and accessories to repair city vehicles, vans, utility trucks, and light duty vehicles on an as-needed basis for multiple departments and divisions for the City of Trenton from date of award to February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, awarded through New Jersey State Contract Number T dash twenty-seven sixty-one, eight six zero five nine, in amount not to exceed seven-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Garcia, can you call the roll?
Certainly, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. And sorry, and Council President Feliciano. It's a force that happens.
It's all right.
Thank you, apologize. Apologies. No disrespect, is that?
That's okay.
Moving on to Resolution 24-11, Resolution accepting bids and awarding contracts to Yaros Landscape for snow plow and snow removal and hauling services for six months with an option to extend for two additional six month, two additional six months on an as-needed basis to supplement the division of streets fleet in an amount not to exceed $160,000, the 2023-65.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Garcia, please proceed to the roll?
Certainly, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 24-003, Resolution authorizing payment for a contract with CME Associates, 3141 Gordon Town Avenue, Harlan, New Jersey, 08859 awarded on emergency basis for professional engineering service for the combined sewage pump station, combined sewage pump station pump replacement in amount not to exceed $108,049 for the Trenton Sewer Utility.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Garcia, can you call the roll?
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 24-04, Resolution authorizing contract to National Auto Fleet Group, awarded through Sourceville Contract Number 91, excuse me, 091521, formerly NAF, formerly National Joint Power Alliance, for the purchase of two white 2024 Ford Broncos for four-by-four SUVs and related accessories for Trenton Water Works. This is a one-time purchase in amount not to exceed $69,018.2.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Garcia, can you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 24-006, Resolution amending the contract with CDM Smith Inc. for automated meter reading program management phase one to extend it for a period of two years.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Garcia, can you proceed with the roll?
Certainly, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 24, Resolution 24-007, Resolution authorize, Resolution authorizing Trenton Water Works to enter into a lease-to-purchase agreement with Prestec, did I say that right? Prestec Real Estate LLC for the property, for the property loan at Fort Ludlow Drive in U.N. Township in the amount of $54,000, paid in $3,000 monthly payments for 18 months.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Garcia, can you move to the roll?
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, moving on to ordinances, ordinance 24 for first reading, ordinance 24-01, and ordinance amending and supplementing Trenton City Code, Section 89-2, governing the parking of vehicles near a fire hazard.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Councilwoman, yes. Thank you.
Uh, so I just, I spoke.
That's Frisbee, yeah.
Frisbee. Um, I just, I spoke with Mr. Bridges to make sure this is okay. I wanted to bring to the record firefighter Andres Perez had some commentary that likely to read in support of this ordinance. So firefighter Perez stated, "We believe that we're testing that, you're looking for us to amend that as well to just say 10 o'clock straight across the board, sir?"
10 o'clock straight across the board. 10 o'clock straight across the board.
Okay, I heard you. Thank you, Council, Councilman Harrison.
I was gonna say, Council President, I just, I wanna respectfully disagree with that. I know it's a nuisance, but it's also not fair to some people who are actually doing fireworks on 4th of July, for instance, and, you know, actually doing them responsibly. So I would feel like that's unfair to 10 o'clock, but whatever the council decides.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, so is there a noise ordinance for Fridays and Saturdays in the City of Trenton? Is, I mean, what is the time of the?
It's 10.
Is it?
It's 10 o'clock.
It's 10 o'clock. Across the board is 10 o'clock.
I guess the question most before the body is, do you wanna make the, the, uh, motion to amend fireworks ordinance to be 10 o'clock across the board? Or is there a motion to accept this and then make the noise ordinance consistent with this fireworks ordinance such that it spells out the exception on, um, Fridays and Saturdays and holidays for fireworks only?
Across the board, 10 o'clock. I've received many calls about the fireworks going off at 4:00 in the morning at 10 o'clock.
So the motion, the motion is then to amend the fireworks ordinance to be 10 o'clock across the board keeping its current, uh, current status?
Madam President?
Yes.
May I suggest, um, that maybe we just amend the weekends to 10 p.m. and eighteen, the holidays to midnight? I don't know, that's, that's good.
Councilman Harrison? Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
So, um, Council Vice President Figueroa Kattemberg suggested to amend everything to 10 o'clock except for on the holidays that it could go till midnight.
The noise ordinance is 10 p.m. I think it should be consistent.
Okay. So then would we, so then would you like to make a motion, Councilman Harrison, that we, um, amend it to 10 p.m. across the board and then we take a, or leave it like it is? Can we take a vote on that?
I put, I put a motion on the floor to amend it to 10 p.m. across the board.
Do I have a second? Okay. Okay, so then proceed.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards?
Um, respectfully, I think that it seems that a lot of us agree to amend it to 10 p.m. with the exception of holidays, so I would like to motion for that amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for a motion called, motion to amend, not called the board.
One second. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I would like to just say I wholeheartedly support my colleague who said words, um, amendment, particularly in the summertime, um, the Trenton Thunder often has fireworks and it does not get truly dark until about 9, 9:30. So that would be helpful for those opportunities, but also on the holidays to give people a chance to celebrate 4th of July Memorial Day weekend and so forth.
Okay, I, I do agree with that. So should we add in here because they do get special permits at the ballpark for their fireworks? So if we make an exception for those with special permits to operate outside of the noise, noise more than?
Well, that's in here.
It's in there, right?
I thought it's like, it's, it's in here. Um, permit or?
Council President?
Yes, um, Director.
I think it seems like this long discussion isn't worth the call. Table this until the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Especially since Mr. Harrison?
Yes, yes. That's right. So I'll make a motion to table this until the next council meeting. Do I have a second?
Second. So moved.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried, Madam President. Ordinance 23, excuse me, 24-03, an ordinance of the City of Trenton amending Chapter 132 Housing Standards of the Code of the City of Trenton to add a new article inside of the lead-based inspections.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-04, ordinance continuing certain positions fixing salary ranges, therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of these ranges.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-5, ordinance amending ordinance 19-37 and sidewalk ordinance creating seasonal positions fixing the salary range, therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of the same.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Garcia? You call the roll?
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee, Feliciano, sorry.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, at this time, reach public comment. Uh, for those in the audience, and for public, for purpose of public comment will be limited to five minutes, correct? And may, President Council, any matter that you wish, uh, the council is not obliged to respond. Our first person to comment is, uh, is Salina Maiden. Uh, I have Ann Upco. And while Ann says she left as well, Mr. Richard Livingston.
Mr. Carter, uh, informed, I'm sorry, uh, main dress, sorry, Madam President, I mean, to give the instructions about speaking.
Right. Mr. Garcia, please provide the instructions.
I thought I did.
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
About the name, stick your name and address for the record, I do apologize.
Uh, Richard Livingston, uh, property owner, 1299 East State Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Reason for my visit here today, um, good evening, Council, and everybody involved here today. I was here to respond to a ordinance that I received in regards to property at our own 129 East State Street, uh, formerly a bar establishment. Um, I've had this property renovated, cleaned up, and ready for operation. Issue to CEO, I had the police department inspect it and they told me that the ordinance that's currently on, on file, which is, uh, 158-10, that within a thousand feet of a church or school, um, or another liberal establishment is there. I was just trying to incorporate a civic place where people come, uh, meet, have events, um, and just gather. We do fundraising for youth in the community. So it's basically just a gathering point. It's, I didn't apply for a license for a social club. I applied for a license for a rental hall, it's a bed space, just for the place to be used. I didn't apply for a liquor license or anything like that. I didn't apply for cannabis, I didn't apply for anything that needed to be governed at a different level, just a usable space. I got the occupancy certificate from the building department, everything. I applied for a license. Now it comes back that I can't utilize this because there is a church across the street that's not very, been active for the last seven years of our own property. So my, my point here is that the ordinance is clearly helpful in certain cases. But when you're trying to do something different for the community, you decide to do something different that broadens the opportunity for people to congregate civically and to grow and have an opportunity for people. Uh, we were doing events for the youth, we just did a Christmas drive at that place. But it's like, what can you do at this point in time? And if you're not trying to do something that's, you know, far-fetched, why is the ordinance restricting you when you've done everything? I've done everything that the city is asking me to do on this property, you know? Forest, the fire code, the fire prevention, it's been inspected on at least three times. It's ready to go. But now this ordinance that the police come back telling me that it's up to the council, it's up to the city clerk's office, they're just calling that's the code. And I'm saying, well, it applies, but it doesn't apply if it's from 1975 and you're trying to make progress today to 2024.
What was the address again?
1299 East State Street. It's East State Street in Logan.
Thank you.
Sure.
David Harris?
Steve Clay? Good evening, uh, Steve Clay Wolf, head road handler in Township. Uh, last month, I had asked about, uh, follow-up with the council to get information from Director Richardson about animals at the shelter. And, uh, Ms. Feliciano, you said there was a, an attempt to get a meeting. I'm just wondering if there's been any progress on that? If you've got any information from her? If we know at least how many animals she may have killed so far? Uh, what the status is? Myself, I submitted it over in August to get records of each of the animals they had in the shelter at that time. After three months, I got records for less than half of the dogs, none of the cats. And even those records that I did receive were, were grossly incomplete, which means I can't even track, keep track of the animals they have. Um, so that's very concerning. Those records are required to be kept by law. And they can't, they can't have them, and these animals are entering the shelter and just vanishing. I'd also like to ask, uh, at that same, in October, um, I believe Councilwoman Williams had asked, or had given her 90 days to come back with a plan, uh, of how she was gonna begin to enforce the breeding ordinance and all of the other laws that they should have been enforcing for, for years and apparently have not. Uh, she also said, within 90 days, those trailers that have been, we've been paying for for five years would be completed and installed. So that 90 days ends in approximately two weeks from now. So I'm wondering if, um, Ms. Richardson will be coming back to council to give that information for the public to hear? And I'd also like to know, uh, I'm sorry, let me just change gears. I'd also like to point out, on the agenda this year, uh, for the meeting scheduled, one border health meeting was scheduled, and that is the, the minimum requirement by law. But Trenton doesn't have record of, of having a border health meeting in at least the last three years. You haven't had a health director since last year. The appointment for an acting director expired in June. Nobody's been appointed to fulfill that space. There's not even a job listing to find a new health director. The inspectors in the health department tasked with investigating lead within the homes were instead found guilty of stealing from the fund to pay for that. The animal shelter's a mess. Um, we've heard complaints about the, the lack of resources for the seniors. So given all that, wouldn't it, I'm suggesting maybe it would be prudent to have more than one border health meeting, perhaps even quarterly, to get some of these updates, um, and start driving, uh, the health department to start making some positive changes? Thank you. Leon Gales? Gales. Please state, please state your name and address for the record, sir. Leon Gales, 333 West State Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm just interested to go on behalf of the residents of three thirty-three West Street. Um, for his parking on, on, uh, Rutgers, Rutgers Place, I received a ticket today, well, this is my second ticket today, um, just wanted to know, how can we go about, um, residents being able to park on Rutgers Place, being that there's a school zone? And saying that from seven to nine, there's no parking, uh, is there any way we can consider looking into parking for the residents that have no parking? And even if you live there, inside the park, in the parking lot itself, there's no parking? But it's a film, the only place you have is the street to park. Even on West State Street, if you park up there, and even if you, you park up there, by time you come out in the morning, you have a ticket before you need to go to work. I'm just wondering, is there any way we can go about, you know, having something done?
Mr. Gales, I ask that you would, um, I'm your West Ward representative. And if you would send me an email outlining that, I could have it addressed with the appropriate directors, and I can get back with you with an answer.
Okay.
Okay, um, in my, uh, my first initial T, my last name Frisbee, at TrentonNJ.org.
Okay.
And you can always go on the city's website, and you can email directly from there as well.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you for coming on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Point of order, though, before the council addresses the public, please ask the chair for the mic to speak. Also, there is no back and forth commentary, um, with the council, because you had Mr. Garcia state during this time. Um, but it's fine, but please just ask, um, chair to be with the public. Mr. Garcia, you could just...
Certainly, Madam President, that are, those are all, that is all the public comment I have for this evening. Uh, you can move on to city comment now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Uh, thank you for inspiring me.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was, he said there was, that was it, there's another?
I'd like to, I didn't know that.
Okay, come on, that's fine.
Hi, um, my name is John Howell, uh, I'm also from three thirty-three West State Street, uh, Carteret Arms Apartments, uh, apartment four F. Um, oh, I'm sorry, my name is John Howell. I live at three thirty-three West State Street, the Carteret Arms, um, apartment four F, uh, in Trenton. Uh, the reason I'm here is also because of the previous, um, speaker, um, as of, it was my knowledge, it was this morning that parking enforcement, um, ticketed all, most of the automobiles parked on Rutgers, uh, Place in front of the building, that is the main access road to the building. It also happens to be one of the access, um, ways into the, um, charter school about two buildings down, uh, State, West State Street. What needs to be understood with this situation is that the Carteret Arms was built in nineteen fifty-nine and only has enough parking on property for three hundred units, or one car per unit. As, um, most people know, if you have a significant other and that person has a car, um, they cannot park in the lot, they have to park on the street because of the limited parking. The result is, is that if you have two cars in your family, you have to park on either Rutgers, like Rutgers, um, Place or the adjacent areas of State Street. In the last month, the parking sign regulations were changed. Um, and as well as a no left turn sign was installed at the intersection of Rutgers Place and State Street, um, banning the making of a left turn for the entire day. The previous sign limited, uh, left turns to basically rush out. The result is, is that, um, there is a, with the reduction of the parking, which is for half of Rutgers Place, um, the parking situation has now become acute. Parking has been limited on State Street, it only goes west on State Street, about a hundred yards from Rutgers, Rutgers Place, and one can only park on one side of the street. There is a new building, uh, that was a conversion of the old Department of Education building into apartments. Uh, they do not have enough parking for the number of residents in the building. So therefore, there's competition from that, as well as redevelopment of the various townhouses on the north side of West State Street. There needs to be some relief. This is a major, the, the lack of left turn and the lack of parking is a major inconvenience for the residences of the Carteret Arms principally, as well as the other, uh, surrounding buildings. And obviously, we would like, um, some help. Um, it's important to the livability of the residents, um, as well as our ability to invite guests to the building, because you cannot invite a guest to the building, and they stay after seven P M. Because your car will be towed because of the acute parking situation in the lot. So now, if the guest comes, and of course you have no parking for half of Rutgers Place, um, which is all day, um, then they are subject to be ticketed. And obviously, this does not make for a happy situation. So, um, I'm here to request some help, uh, with the situation. This is, um, this happened, the left turn was installed between December, I'm sorry, November seventeenth and December first. I suspect that the parking signs were installed, um, prior, I mean, at about the same time. There was no prior announcement, flyers, warnings, or other media alerting people to these changes. And of course, there was no hearing, no nothing, so this is a major issue. We would appreciate your help.
Thank you.
That's it.
Madam President? Mr. Howell, again, I'm your West Ward representative. If you would, uh, just take my email down, which I know that you have, and send all of that to me, and I can also have that addressed.
I did two hours ago.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
We appreciate you, sir. So, thank you very much, appreciate you.
On your call, Madam President.
We're on city comments now?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to know tonight, uh, as we witness, we have peaceful transition of power, which is very, very good, very needed by, um, that is something, as we all know, since January sixth, that's not a guarantee at the federal level, but I'm very happy to see the city of Trenton be able to make that happen. And I applaud my colleagues for, as we go forth, as, as Councilwoman Edwards says, we're all leaders. And I'm very proud of this group, um, proud to be part of this council, and I look forward to great things that we'll do together in twenty twenty-four. And I also want to thank Council President Teska Frisbee for her service last year as our council president. So thank you very much for getting us all getting onto a successful start. Uh, also, I want to, uh, plug, we have the North Ward System Police Advisory Council meeting again happening. It's, uh, been successful, as we started it back up in September. If anyone'd like a flyer after the meeting, I would be happy to give you one. Our next meeting is on Wednesday, January seventeenth, from five thirty to seven P M. At Galilee Baptist Church, which is at four forty Martin Luther King Boulevard. So, uh, please join us if you're available, um, or if you know anyone in the North Ward who, uh, might be interested in attending. So I have a couple issues I wanted to, uh, bring up for, uh, for us to think about. Uh, first one is, uh, coming up in the next several months, close to, as we get close to the summer even, we're gonna have a lot of inspectors retiring from our great city, uh, throughout our departments, uh, zoning, planning, housing, and so forth. And we really need to redouble our efforts, uh, to make sure that we're replacing these, uh, folks who have really served our city for so long, and so in some cases, they kept their positions further on time than they wanted to, uh, and wanting to retire sooner. And we need to make sure, as we're bringing people on, that they are brought on in a sufficient number of months or weeks to be able to be trained, uh, so we don't lose that great institutional knowledge. And that's one of the things, as we're, we're trying to rebuild our city and move forward, we need to make sure that we have good people, we have qualified people, we have knowledgeable people. But also, you know, if there's any way to do this, that these folks that have served our city so well, they aren't lost to the sands of time, that we do try to mine that knowledge, that they have the way things have been done and the way things could be done better. So I look forward to, uh, hopefully, council working with administration to facilitate that this year. Uh, additionally, um, there is becoming a great need, and some of it we gave a hurt tonight by, um, two gentlemen. We really need to look at adding resources, and I believe some personnel, and maybe not many, to our traffic and engineering division, to replace a lot of the signs that are in the city. I have encountered many such as in the North Ward, um, that are sun bleached, they're outdated, they're deteriorated. Um, some of it's, you know, removed, taken away, maybe knocked over by a car, knocking over a, uh, the pole, holding it up. And I can only imagine what it's like for someone who didn't grow up here and live a lot of their life to know, you know, how do you go from Greenwood Avenue to the train station, when you make the right-hand turn at the gas station, and there's no sign to tell you, is there, because it's sun bleached? Literally, that is the truth, you could see that tomorrow. Uh, there's other signs saying about how to get to Pennington Avenue up at a battle monument that need to be replaced, there's parking signs, a lot of places that gets contributing to a lot of the problems we're having with ticketing. So this is something I would like to see us, uh, and I know financially, our city is counting every penny, every dollar, and it's very difficult for us to add resources, but if there's any ways that we can maybe find us through grant, uh, maybe through state government can help us with, uh, grant programs. We really need to upgrade our signage in the city to make things safer and easier for our residents, and also our visitors. We can't attract businesses, we can't attract new organizations, new blood, if they come to a city and it's hard to navigate the city. You travel around this country, and I'm fortunate to see a lot of our other state capitals, and I don't see the same problems just with basic signage, and that's one of the things I hope that we can ameliate this year. Um, and finally, I'd like to, uh, congratulate the Kush Dispensary on your application approval tonight, uh, coming before council. I look forward to your success in your business and your efforts to help make our city of Trenton even better, uh, going forward. So congratulations. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harrison, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, I wish everybody a Happy New Year, and thank all the staff and everybody in the community for all that they do for the children and helping feed people. So please, do all you can to help this great city move forward, so thank you and have a blessing.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you. Um, I don't have much to say tonight, but I will say thank you to everyone for being present this evening. Happy New Year to everyone. Um, really quick, I just want to say, um, to Mr. Livingston, um, thank you for providing that information to us. Something I'll look into as far as the ordinance, I think he's still here, um, one fifty-eight dash ten. We do need more space near the city of Trenton, so if there's anything that we can do to try to bypass or, you know, make sure we're in compliance, but also providing, um, a space for people to host different events. We lack that here in the city of Trenton, and I would love to see something like that here. Um, also, just a quick, uh, I've been going back and forth about our rent stabilization, uh, ordinance, and I know that we have one in place, however, we've, uh, gone silent with our rent stabilization board so that it's posted, so that if anyone's interested, that we can re-ignite that and get some things going, um, to progress in that area. Also, a quick, I've been getting a lot of phone calls about the lighting on Hamilton Avenue being out, and, um, spoke to Mrs. Santora today, that they have called P S E G to get those resolved. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we can have that lighting, uh, all the lights fixed in that corridor where all those businesses are, there've been people being, several people being robbed, um, and beaten, and it's pretty dark over there, so hopefully, we can get that taken care of ASAP. And I just want to thank my colleagues, this was our first year here, um, as council, but not a full year for us at large members, but a full year as a, as a collective, and I just want to thank Council President Frisbee and Council Vice President Feliciano. I know we didn't probably get everything right, but you all did the best that you can, could. And I'm hoping that our new leadership will continue to, um, progress and, you know, keep our personal things aside, and let's move the city forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Frisbee? Sorry, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Sorry. I forgot to mention, January later will be my first community conversation, um, at the West Ward Police Station. We will also have the Trenton, uh, Water Department present to answer any questions about the smart meter, meter, um, installation, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, uh, I am going to try and keep my comments, um, sorry, I wanted to just address, um, what you, uh, you mentioned earlier about, um, not addressing, I'd asked that you would give grace, because I'm just getting out of this seat. It's been less than forty-five minutes, not even an hour, so not speaking and, um, asking for permission is something I'm getting used to. And I do know that we are allowed to address this, as we're not allowed, you know, we're not obligated to address the public, but we are allowed to. So which is why I want to make sure that those who live in the West Ward are aware of who I am and how to best contact me. Um, Mr. Livingston, I am, I concur with, uh, my colleague, Ms. Gonzalez, Councilwoman Gonzalez. We are in need, and I do, um, I believe he left, I'm not sure, he's still here. But we do need more, uh, businesses like that, and I would hope that the city would not be a hindrance, um, in what we're doing so that we look at this ordinance to make sure that those who are trying to serve the pub, public in a different way. Alcohol is not always needed to be a celebratory, celebratory moment, um, and I commend him for that. So I hope that we can get this resolved, so that he can go on and continue to serve the public. Um, Mr. Gail and Mr. Howell, thank you for coming out on this evening and bringing it to our attention. Um, there are a couple of concerns I have with, um, how that was handled, but I don't want to speak without speaking with the directors and getting clarification, along with, um, so with saying that, I also ask that you would come out on, uh, February, where am I? Um, we have the West Ward Community Conversations, and that's going to be held on Tuesday, um, February thirteenth at six P M. At Trinity Cathedral Academy, eight zero one West State Street at six P M. Um, and we will have two directors that will be present, um, we're always, um, having police presence at whatever meetings I have, my meetings are every other month. Um, and it is right now, it's at Trinity, and we are subject to change, um, prior with, um, amongst at least notice. I also want to say Happy New Year to everyone, um, Happy Holidays to all of you, whatever it is that you celebrate. We wish you wealth and we wish you good health in the new year. Um, there are a lot of people that are sick, including our councilman who was on the line, my colleague, um, Mr. Garcia. Everybody's pressing their way through, um, I'm struggling, and I'm sure as many of you are. So we ask that you would just be mindful of your health, um, you, your family, wherever you are, wash your hands constantly, and everybody do the best that they can so that we can bring in this new year, um, in as much, uh, wealth as we possibly can. And I believe that is it for me. In my closing, I'd like to read our city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us, oh, guardians, I have one other thing after this, but recognizing the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I also want to, uh, thank, uh, newly-elected Councilwoman President, um, Feliciano, and thank you for the services that you, um, did provide while working with me as I sat in the president's seat. And I congratulate as well Councilwoman Figaro Keppenberg, um, stepping in the seat as vice president. When I first, um, got sworn in, I read an old, um, I cited an old, uh, fable, um, it's an old African proverb, actually, that states, um, if you want to go fast, you go alone, if you want to go far, you go together. I hope that we do not, um, with this, as we go forward, that we don't count to four, but that we all count to seven, so that all of us are included in all of the decisions as we move forward. Thank you, and everyone have a safe evening, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Figaro Keppenberg?
Good evening, everybody. Twenty twenty-four, Happy New Year to everybody, I hope it started off right. Um, I want to thank my council colleagues for the vote of confidence, um, as I move into this seat. But as Councilwoman, um, Edwards so quaintly noted in our discussion, that we are all leaders. So, um, just moving these meetings forward, and don't plan to be any different than that I've been this past year. But thank you again to my colleagues, um, and congratulations, Councilwoman, um, President Feliciano. Thank you. Um, so, um, a couple of things, um, with regards to the parking, that is, that's an issue throughout the entire city, so thank you for bringing that to our attention again, I'm sure Councilwoman Frisbee will get on top of that. There, there are issues, there are more, there is more enforcement throughout the city, and to, uh, Mr. Howell's point, you know, there are more vehicles per household, and there are more people in each household. and there are more people in each household now. So, there's issues across the city. I hope that that can get straightened out for you guys, and there could be a solution as we work through other areas of the city. That's pretty much all I had to say. Oh, Mr. Clegg, I'm sorry. Thank you again for being an avid animal advocate for Trenton, you know, residing outside of the city of Trenton. I do assure you that we both have these conversations with Director Richardson. You know, we've had them in the past. We haven't really come to any grand conclusions yet, but with the holidays and, again, with people being ill and stuff, you know, there's a little bit of delay. But we are working on that, as that's a sound issue for me as well. But thank you again for always bringing it to our attention so that we stay on top of it and nobody forgets that that's an issue. Otherwise, yeah, I have nothing further. I want to wish you guys well. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Edwards?
Happy New Year, everyone, and thank you all for coming. It's great to see you all here this evening. Just a reflection on 2023. I have to reiterate how proud I am to work with this body up here on the day. Despite our differences, tonight was definitely an example of how we can put everything to the side and support one another. So, I want to commend us all for that effort of unity. And I look forward to 2024. I just want to say thank you to Council, former Council President Frisbee for your services in 2023, and for yours too, former CVP Feliciano. You two did a great job. As first-year council members, straight out the gate, not having any experience, I echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Gonzalez. You did the best that you could, and I look forward to the improvements of 2024 and more camaraderie between us all. So, that takes me into... There's so many things I want to talk about. But I want to talk about something more pressing than the niceties. For the past several days, including this morning, we have been getting a lot of asylum seekers dropped off at the Trenton Transit Center. We have at least six to seven buses. Each of them, we've had hundreds of asylum seekers dropped off in Trenton. Right now, the state of New Jersey does not receive federal funding to house asylum seekers, but New York does. So, we have been rerouting a lot of them to New York so that they can get access to the services that they need. And I just want to reassure people that we're not just passing the buck off to another state and another governor because we don't want to deal with it. But they have the resources that unfortunately we do not have at this time. And that brings me to my point of Congressman Bonnie Watson Coleman working with Governor Murphy and working with Mayor Garcia. So, we will be receiving some periodic updates from the federal government as to hopefully some resources. She does sit on the appropriations committee, so she is able to strongly advocate for resources for our state, in which myself, as a congressional staffer to her, but more importantly, as a councilwoman to the city of Trenton, I've been advocating for resources for our state so that our capital city could, you know, get a trickle-down effect with that because we've had nearly two dozen, if not more, asylum seekers that stayed here in the city because they sent their new family. So, we want to make sure that they are okay and receive the resources that they need. But we also want to make sure that the federal government is held accountable in this process as well because this is an issue that they should have handled from day one. Though the Texas governor should not be busing people around this country and just dropping them off from their, on their doorsteps at these governors, but Congress has failed to fund this initiative to help people escaping from poverty and famine and sectioned trafficking and things like that, wars in their home countries, which is bringing them to the United States of America. So, we need to understand there's a humanitarian crisis that we cannot ignore on a federal level, but now stricken down to our very city. So, this is why I'm addressing this here because this is directly affecting Trentonians. So, we want to make sure that we get the resources that we need from the federal government. So, that is in the works as well. So, if anyone ever had any questions about that, periodically, as we go along, the councilwoman will be providing more information through press releases. So, just keep your eye out on that. And I'll be providing information as I get it from her to our constituency. So, that is one of the pressing issues of 2024 now. So, oh, and also, I wanted to address the animal shelter. There has been an appropriation that council approved to fix those trailers. Unfortunately, and this was during the Board of Health meeting that we had, the one meeting, and we had been discussing about having them more often, preferably quarterly. I know there has been talks about, amongst councilmembers, about doing that because the Health and Human Services Department does cover a lot, and having one annual meeting does not suffice enough. So, I am right there with you. But we are staying on top of it, these trailers. We have earmarked an appropriation for them to be equipped with electric and gas and things like that to provide more space for administrative, to free up space inside of the shelter until we're able to find a new facility that can house all the animals that our city sees coming into our shelter, so that we don't have to continue funding money into Pacifician other shelters so that we can take care of all our animals here. So, I want to just close out again. Congratulations, and to the entire body of council for a successful reorganization. Oh, and congratulations to Mercer County Executive Brian, sorry. Dan Duffin on his swearing-in today. And thank you to former county executive Brian Hughes for his service in the past 21-plus years. And I pray you all have a great, great, great 2024, and make sure you check those to-do boxes on your resolutions. Don't keep saying "new year, new me." Become that new you. Have a good one.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Well, good evening, everyone. Excuse me, Happy New Year. Thank you all for sticking around with us on tonight. To my colleagues, I would like to say thank you for, I would consider it to be a great year of work that we collectively did in helping to move the city of Trenton forward in the right direction, coming together to the business of the city, and then moving in a way that we felt would best benefit our residents, right? So, thank you all for that, and thank you for your vote for the succession of me to be the president and for Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner to be the vice president. So, I thank you for that. When it comes to, there's a couple of things. Mr. Clegg, so Director Richardson, is he still here? Okay. So, Director Richardson and I are trying to schedule the holidays and everything. She's not been around, right? So, we're looking to connect and have a conversation with her and myself. Vice President Figueroa Kettner and Councilwoman Williams are looking to make that happen. So, stay tuned, it is going to happen. As far as the Oprah requests and the records and everything, you know what? Yeah. Our, the request and everything comes in. The requests are sent out from the clerk's office, and then it isn't coming upon those offices that hold those documents to get that information together and give it back so we can give it out. I speak to the record-keeping of the offices, but that'll be something that we'll have to look into to see. One, because we do want timely responses to be provided back to the public, right? And then for proper onus to fall on whoever is deficient, right? Be it the clerk's office or be it the departments. Everyone has to do their part. Far as I know, our clerk's office has been diligent on doing what it is that they're supposed to do in requesting the documents, whether it comes slow or not at all. That's another discussion that we will have as we move forward to get everybody on point, so that we meet the needs of the people. To your point about the acting director appointment expiring in June, I guess that is another conversation that we would have to have, right? I am going to say this. I feel that acting director Maria Richardson is doing the best that she has with the hand and she has been dealt. She needs more staffing around or more resources to help to provide certain things to help make her department run better in that regard, right? So, we will look to see what it is with that. As far as your request about the Health Department meeting, the Board of Health, here we are, one meeting, that's what we're supposed to have. But we did discuss at that last meeting that we had that we would like to move, excuse me, to having quarterly meetings and things provided. So, we will look into that as well because there's a lot of diverse things that are happening in that department, right? COVID now is coming back, we have these animals, we have the inspectors. We have a lot of things going on. And so, we do need to make sure that we are just kept abreast of what is happening. With regards to the parking, it is everywhere. We are all getting emails constantly, north, south, east, west. It's interesting because as we make inquiry about this, it was like, wow, when the town was planned out, you know, it was planned out, and the sketch got to look like this, and only this many parking spaces were allotted, and we have signage and this and that. If we have to look at it and think about how we can repurpose and do besides this, then that's just what we have to do. We have a lot of people here, and they have a lot of needs. I don't know if it's a quick fix, I'm not promising anything, but I am saying that we will look into it to see what is going on with that. Let me see, I just want to make sure I got it all. I do want to shout out Mr. Anthony Santora at Public Works. I have made requests on behalf of some residents where I live at on the island. They've asked about lights down at the train station and things like that. And Anthony had went and checked out and got back to me about reporting several lights down that way, and PSEG looking into it. I do want to shout out Police Director Steve Wilson for taking care of a camera issue down by the pond where we are on the island because down over in that area that called to say people like to dump items, animals, and a whole bunch of other stuff. And so, now we have an operable camera. Thank you to Anthony Santora again, who's going to be putting signs about video surveillance. We're looking to prevent things from happening, right? And trying to be proactive and not reactive. They've replaced signs on the island as well. We're looking to get all of that done, so shout out to him for making that happen. Mr. Director Simple, if you could, I just have a question for you, please. Thank you. Good evening, Happy New Year.
Good evening, Council President.
Thank you. So, I had sent an email to you the other day. I do live at 1510 Riverside Drive on the island. There was work that was conducted at the neighbor's house, and it caused a whole mess on the block. And I asked about the protocol about alerting people when we're going to be doing construction and maintenance on a street. And when I asked the guys, no notices were given out. I mean, I didn't get one. But I never received a response from you about what the protocol is regarding notification to residents when roads are going to be done in a non-emergent situation.
All right. Good evening, Director Simple.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Council President.
Thank you.
We have, we're supposed to provide access for the residents at all times. If we have, if we have to close the road, we notify the police. And remember, most of our jobs is emergencies. If it's something that's scheduled, we should notify the residents. But if in case of emergencies, sometimes we would knock on doors if we had to shut down the street. But we, I looked into the, I saw your email this afternoon. I looked into what happened, and it's one of our young foremen. I have to get with him this afternoon to correct that. But we're working on improving that process, so we shouldn't have a problem with that moving forward. But we do, we are required to provide access for all the residents. But if we need to, we need to shut up, we'll provide the necessary notifications.
Okay. Thank you. Because we have elderly people beyond that needed, and it was tight, it was just a whole problem. Me, I don't care, I ride up on the grass and just ride through, right? But the elderly people and everything, just in case no one knew that that was happening. So, thank you for that, if you don't mind.
No problem.
We would appreciate that moving forward for everybody, everywhere. Thank you. That being said, on January the 10th at 5:30 at the West Trenton Police Headquarters, I'm having a community conversation. On January 24th at 5:30 at engine number 91464 West State Street, I'm having another community conversation. And on January the 31st at 7:00 p.m., I'm having a Zoom meeting for anyone that wants to Zoom in and have a conversation with me. Also, at each of my meetings, there will be Zoom access, and we will be streaming live on my Crystal, or Councilwoman Crystal Feliciano Facebook page, so we will have access. Speaking to that point before I close, when it comes to Zoom meetings here going live for city council, prior to her time expiring, Council President Frisbee was looking to try to get us up and running virtually. I know that there have been a lot of questions about that. But unfortunately, due to technological difficulties and change in staffing, unexpectedly, that has been delayed. But please know that we are working to make that happen sooner rather than later to get us virtual so that way people can see what is going on, right? And so, to Ray, thank you for being here, for doing everything that you do to help us. Thank you to my council colleagues. Thank you to all the directors. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, for sticking with us, you know, during this time of transition. We appreciate you. That being said, thank you, everybody. Good night.
Madam President, has a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All say aye.
Aye.
Turned opposed, not opposed, end of meeting. 8:10.